Once the capacity has been reached, admission into the meeting space will be closed. All audience members will be required to wear masks at all times. Masks will be available upon request. The committee of the whole meeting scheduled for September 2nd, if, oh, no, mm-mm. September the 9th at 5:00 PM. This was recor- um, is a revision because we had the hurricane. September the 9th will be streamed live via YouTube. A link to watch the meeting can be found on Board Docs located on the school board's website. A period for written public comment will be provided before the meeting as well as before each action is taken by the board on an action item. Individuals wishing to make a public comment about any of the posted action items will need to click on the agenda item in Board Docs and submit via the highlighted public comment hyperlink on the agenda item details. Online comments are available for public review. And I now call to order with invocation by Board Member Mark Ballou and a pledge by School Board Member Connie Bernard.
Heavenly Father, we come to you with thankful hearts for the many blessings in our lives. We pray that you, your presence will continue to give strength and comfort to those impacted by Hurricane Ida. Guide us to demonstrate how our community may recover and prosper through serving to others, to promote perseverance and hard work, and to provide inspiration through our commitment to ensuring students acquire knowledge that maximizes their opportunities in their lives. All this, we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
District 9, President Tatman.
Present.
District 4, Vice President Collins.
Present.
District 1, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District 2, Mr. Lannis.
Here.
District 3, Mr. Howard.
Present.
District 5, Ms. Ware Jackson. District 6, Ms. Dyson. District 7, Mr. Goday. District 8, Ms. Bernard.
Present.
And we have a quorum. And I'll take a quick moment of personal privilege. I want to lift up this month's readings from my culture and diversity reader. This September, from September 15th, October 15th actually, in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month. We have four readings, actually a couple of brief ones, as recommended by dear Hispanic literary expert, if you will, that's a friend of mine. So Burnt Water by Carlos Fuentes. Once I Was You, A Memoir of Love and Hate in a Torn America by Maria Hinojosa. Our America by Jose Marti, essay for anybody that just wants a quick read. And then Mexican Gothic by Sylvia Moreno Garcia. And so I hope everyone would choose at least one of those to just dive into and experience someone else's heritage, which contributes to the amazing diverse culture we have in this country. My second thing is I just want to lift up one of the community groups that frequent our school board meetings and sometimes we say, Lord, all they do is just fuss and complain. And that is Step Up Louisiana. They, uh, they're actually a statewide, statewide organization and they do community service work in addition to showing up at board meetings and fussing at us. And so they reached out and said, look, we helping with hurricane recovery efforts and we have some food donated by Imperfect Foods with some people who had to counsel their orders going in the Slidell area because they had no power, et cetera. And so we reached out to Child Nutrition and was able to give that fresh produce and chicken and bacon, et cetera, to staff in the Child Nutrition Department. And so glad to have helped them to get something to help our staff. And I wanted to lift up that they do more than just fuss at us. And that's my, the end of my moment of personal privilege and we move to item C1, update from the superintendent.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Hurricane Ida response. The Hurricane Ida Emergency Response Team met daily beginning on Wednesday, August 25th as a storm entered the Gulf of Mexico. As many of you know, at that time, it was a very tough time and challenging time for our community. However, our community has been very resilient as we've been able to build the work to bring us back and restore us to where we are. This team of essential personnel met every day leading up through and after Hurricane Ida, made landfall to make decision on school closure, emergency response, and recovery, even as they managed the impacts of Ida in their own homes and families. After Hurricane Ida passed through our area, we worked quickly to try and meet the immediate needs of our families by providing stable meals through delivery and pickup points. I just wanted to acknowledge publicly and say thank you so much to Dr. Mann, who is from our nutrition area, and Focus Foods for their support in meeting those essential needs for students and families across the city. I also wanted to acknowledge the quick work of the technology and facilities teams who worked around the clock and through the weekend to get our schools back online, clear our grounds and facilities, and ensure that our students have a safe environment to return to. And additionally, a special thanks goes out to the transportation team and ExxonMobil, which we will formally recognize Baton Rouge, for ensuring that we had enough diesel fuel to begin school earlier this week. We're also extremely grateful to the foundation for the East Baton Rouge Parish School System Foundation who worked hard to make sure that we were able to receive a lot of donations in order to do the work. And so I wanted to allow Board Member Lannis just to say a few words as he represents the board on the foundation. Board Member Lannis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Superintendent, and hello, community. Before I go into the updates from the foundation, first, I want to thank Ms. Connie Bernard, who served on this board, I think it was for the last two years, right, Ms. Bernard?
Probably five.
Probably five, so I apologize. But I want to thank Ms., my board colleague, Ms. Bernard, and I also want to thank our board president, Mr. Tatman, because when I expressed interest, he set up the meeting and Ms. Bernard took our time out of her busy schedule to meet with me so we can discuss. And I also want to thank Ms. Harzfield for welcoming me with welcome, with open arms. And she also thanks you for your service, for serving on the foundation. But just to give some quick updates, one of which is with Exxon. When the foundation saw that Exxon was being very helpful throughout our community, one of the first things they wanted to do was act upon it. And when they reached out to Exxon, Exxon gave a $500,000 donation to our school system, as our superintendent just pointed out, to ensure that our school buses and our transportation was running properly and effectively before we began school after our Hurricane Ida recovery efforts. And our hats goes off to them. And if we could just take one brief second just to give them a hand clap for that because without them, our students wouldn't be back at school today. So thank you, ExxonMobil. I look forward to working with our foundation. When we went through our renaming process for Liberty High School, I was able to work with Ms. Harzfield. And from that relationship, we've just been able to cultivate a magnificent partnership which wanted, which made me want to be a part of the foundation. So I just thank that as we go through our board agenda, I'll have some more updates regarding something that is on the, an item on our agenda. But I just thank you all again. Thank you again, Ms. Bernard, and thank you again, President Tatman.
Yes, and before we get into more of the post-assessment report, I did want to also recognize, I know the board does not always get credit, people reporting to them, but I did want to also recognize the entire board, from President Tatman to Vice President Collins, Board Member Bernard, Mr. Ballou, I can go down the list, Mr. Board Member Howard, Board Member Lannis, Board Member Goday, Board Member Jackson, Board Member Dyson. Throughout that time, as we were giving reports, each of you were very concerned about, not only about how we got schools up and running, but also how our staff was doing. And I just wanted to commend you for that. Most of the time I would have conversation, it was always about how our staff, our faculty, our community, our children, our communities were doing. And I just wanted to give, commend you. It makes me feel good as a superintendent to be working with a board that cares a lot about the community. So I also wanted to recognize the board for that and give them a hand as well. So I wanted to go ahead and also provide a post-storm assessment report. Hurricane Ida have varied impacts on our facilities across the district, and loss of power continued to be our largest barrier through the recovery process. At this time, I'd like to take a moment to invite Monique Scott Spalding, our Administrative Director of Facilities, to share a post-storm assessment report with the board and the community. Spalding?
Thank you, Superintendent R.C. So again, Monique Scott Spalding, Administrative Director of Facilities, and I'm here to share a report with you today. The overall impact, I'm not sure who's controlling the slides, but, oh, sorry, I didn't see it. Okay, so the overall impact related to transportation was fuel and staffing. Those were our number one and number two challenges. With the facilities, obviously, everybody had power outages here in the community, and so the school district experienced that as well. I will call your attention to, the roof damage there was noted a six, but I received some reports, actually just before this meeting, from Aramark, that we're now up to about eight schools with roof damages. They're receiving reports from the vendors and the contractors who have worked with the district and with Aramark. And so that number actually is a little bit increased from where we have it here. But of course, with grounds and maintenance, there were 100% of our facilities that were impacted by that. Most of them were minor. And then with HVAC, about 67% of our facilities had issues related to Ida with HVAC. So this is some pictures of kind of the damage in the community. That first photo is from Choctaw, which is where our transportation facilities are. Aramark has an office of it in that area as well. The maintenance shop is there and a few other school facilities. And so this was the largest impact right in front of our facilities, frankly, and it took the longest to have the power restored in that area. I think most of that came back up Monday evening. And the second set of photos are photos with ExxonMobil and our administrative staff. Most of the board members were aware that this was happening, and so thank you for coming out for the photo op as well. And thank Mr. Chester for representing the superintendent. So most of you know that Exxon donated 16,000 gallons of diesel to us. Our propane vendor was able to resume sending fuel to us, and they returned on Monday and continued that, so there weren't any issues with propane. Staffing challenges in the transportation department, you see some of the notes there. A lot of the impact was from COVID, but a lot of the staffing challenges are ongoing in the transportation department. There's a new director that started there today, and so we're hopeful that they will hit the ground running and be able to work through those issues. Again, pre-storm obstacles in transportation were related to staffing and just untimely adjustments to be able to get the trail buses to support the students if there were callouts or breakdowns or what have you. We're working through some of the staffing protocols post-storm and looking at some of the operations that they have in place to be able to bring some efficiency and effectiveness to that part of the district. So with the resolutions, we're doing daily debriefings with transportation just to make sure that we understand what the gaps are and how we can mitigate those gaps. And there are gaps identified in staffing and communication, but we're working through that. So these are some photos about, from facilities. The first photo is from Greenbrier. That's probably our largest impact with facilities. The, the photo doesn't really depict this, but there were four points of entry into Greenbrier from one tree falling, so it was a massive undertaking. The cost projection of that was, we, we only have limited numbers as it stands now. I'm waiting on additional numbers from Aramark and vendors, but the cost point for that right now frankly is lower than we anticipated. It's under $10,000 at this point. So that remains to be seen of how well we'll be able to get through all of those issues with Greenbrier. We're 97% complete. They, Aramark sent in staff to put the ceiling tiles and everything back in place, actually today. So I think we're about 97% complete with that project. I'll move more quickly, but the T building is at Woodlawn Middle School. There's some minor roof damages there. I think it's under $4,000 with that. And then the other picture on the right is from one of our elementary schools, but the damage is minor there. It looks worse than it actually is. There was minor roof damage. So with facilities, our energy report, you see the site assessments we've been, Aramark and EBR facilities have been assessing sites since Wednesday after the storm when it was safe to start moving through the area. And then you see our layer of outages and when everything came back online. And so when we started school on Wednesday, we only had three sites down. One was the Greenville Superintendent Academy, and then Wildwood. And actually, two sites were down for power, Bernard Terrace was down because of connectivity. But everything's fully restored. With our HVAC report, you see the, the numbers there, so I won't read that to you, but I will tell you that a lot of our issues with HVAC came from power being out for a long period of time. Where it tripped breakers, and there were some power surges when the power was restored. We had some roving power outages where power was restored and then it powered down, and then it was restored again. And so some of that caused some issues with our HVAC. Overall, the assessment from Aramark is that 62% of our sites have had issues that can truly be related to Ida, and we're looking at those invoices to catalog our FEMA estimations as well. We're working with CSRS to make sure that that happens. The last part that I'll talk to you about with HVAC are the MIR 13 filters. We have those filters related to COVID protocols in our school and air quality. They're in 71 sites, and they're due for replacement. That contract, that annual contract is $50,000 and they're replaced quarterly. And so we're getting ready to do that, so it's kind of a perfect time to be able to do that. We've had power down for a while, there's some water intrusion in the buildings, but we're able to get everything back up and get clean filters in the building. And Aramark is working with us to run the AC in some spaces extended amount of times to be able to mitigate some of those damages. With this part of the slide, I was just showing you the people that we're working with. It takes a big team to be able to make sure that EBR's facilities are intact. So you see, you know, Energy and Cox and Aramark and all of those listed there. I will tell you our priority, we were able to start moving forward with grounds and of course, power restoration initially, and then we moved through the other categories that are listed there. Aramark had their business partners return to the school sites on Tuesday. I spoke to you earlier about the roof damage related to the photos. We talked about Greenbrier. At Woodlawn High School, we basically had a lot of shingles that had fallen from the school. I was told that that roof is a little bit over 20 years old. We still have a little bit of warranty on it, but there are tons of shingles. It was estimated at 20 to 30 squares that are on the ground and they're still picking them up. Woodlawn Middle School did have the T building roof damage and some skirting damage as well, but there were also the aluminum bleachers that were damaged there as well. With grounds and maintenance, trees on buildings, you see the schools, specific schools listed there. I will call your attention to, I guess, Greenbrier being our largest issue with, with the trees. But over $40,000 has been spent thus far, and that number's continuing to tick up with continued completion of that job as we progress to completion. Regarding the additional services from RCI, I'll call your attention to that additional cleanup now. Is that about $45,000? It's an estimated, another $8,000 that will come in from RCI, and then from the other four contractors that worked with RCI, there's an estimation of about $15,000. So we'll have total numbers once we receive those invoices.
Board Member Howard?
Thank you, Ms. Collins. I just wanted to know, like, do we plan on applying for FEMA reimbursement for any of the infrastructure damages that occurred because of the storm?
Most definitely. I've been working with Judith since Wednesday of last week after the storm to start, you know, creating a log sheet of what the damages are so that we can have photos and receipts and invoices to be able to apply.
Gotcha. If you could just keep us posted on like, the process with the FEMA reimbursements, that would be helpful for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Board Member Goday?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to thank you and your entire team. I know that, and not only team, our employees, but also our partners in the community for working very hard and getting our schools up and running, because you know, we have a lot of work to do to catch up from last year and also this year, so any missed days are very, very important. So I know you and everyone associated with you were working very hard to pull all of this together and get schools open. And so I just wanted to thank you and all the people who worked with you for that great effort and also for the great report that you've given us. It was very fine and thorough, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Board Member Lannis?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just want to second my colleague, Mr. Goday. I just want to thank every single person that has been a part of the recovery efforts from the top all the way down to the bottom. You know, when these types of storms happen, they don't have a name on them, and everyone is affected, more specifically, our students. And the fact that you all didn't waste any time, you got right back to work, our hats go, our hats go off to you. Just thank all of you, especially you, Mr. Superintendent, for keeping us updated throughout everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and then I did have two quick questions. How do, how did we accommodate and or communicate with families who had no bus driver?
So the transportation department leadership communicated with all of the bus operators and asked them to communicate with their families. We did have some snafus on the first day of school, and Mr. Howell, who's the assistant to the director, has communicated with each and every one of those families, and we have acknowledgements from the families that the resolution that was given was, you know, is supported. And so we haven't done our daily debriefing yet. That usually happens about 7:00 tonight, and so I'll know how the mitigation efforts and resolutions were received today at that debriefing.
Might I suggest, and I know this is, you know, stuff gonna happen, so I'm not saying this to say people ain't doing what have you, but might I suggest email and robocall communications from the district level? Because I just so happened to meet, have a business meeting yesterday in that family. The father has a child in kindergarten, and he had no communication, and that was yesterday, 4:00. And 12 bus drivers, that's a lot of kids. And, and with those bus drivers themselves being out, maybe not either quarantined and asymptomatic or quarantined and very symptomatic, if we can assist in those communications of making sure their families know that we apologize, but we working on it and let's work together to get it done, that would be helpful. And then we did get noticed via email, and this, again, is something that happens. I mean, you know, the AC was on and off. My only question is mold and mildew, when would the mold and mildew remediation be complete on the campuses?
So Aramark still has, I think it's seven projects that are in progress. They were trying to work through everything today, but I think there's still seven projects that are in progress. And so Mr. Calhoun from Aramark states that tomorrow is the day that they should have everything taken care of. I know Wildwood was a challenge because it, that property just received power yesterday, and so we had outside service come in and take care of the carpet and the mold and all in that area. So we're working through it tentatively tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spalding, for your presentation. I, I just wanted, before we shift into other areas, I just wanted to also first say, I just wanted to personally thank every single, all 6,000 employees that we have for returning back on September 7th. As you know, we cannot do this work without our entire team, from teachers, paraprofessionals, bus drivers, you name the position. And even though we came back from a storm, it was really good to see that majority of our staff came back regardless of what their situation and context was, to make sure that our children were cared for and also that we as a community were able to get back and function in the best normal way that we can during this tough time. So I just wanted to personally like to give them all a hand for the outstanding work they've done with opening of schools. All right, so I have two more items just to share. One is the ESER expenditure update. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Sandra, Dr. Sandra Bethley to share the latest update on our ESER expenditures with you all. Dr. Bethley?
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Okay, so we're going to go over the ESER 2 and ESER 3 expenses as of today. And ESER 3, as you remember, our total allocation, and I'm not gonna read this word for word for you, but I'm gonna do our estimates, was 25 million. And this was ESER 3 Action 1, and it was very specific to what we can spend the funds So this is the early, well, actually, this is ESER 2. I think the slides may have gotten a little out of order, but early childhood is in ESER 2 Action 1. So the allocation originally was 8 million, so now we're at a balance of 4.7 million. So with this, we have So with this, we have encumbered and what you're seeing on the chart is expenses that have been deducted from the chart and also encumbered. So we have three literacy coaches, the 12 pre-K teachers, and 12 full-time paraprofessionals. We have a contract and we have materials and supplies. So that leaves our total to as to $4.7 million. Then we allocated funds for core subject materials. And this is a list of the materials. If you look on the slide that we have purchased and the amount, these items have been purchased and have been paid for. This is the second slide with the items. And then the third slide. So all of these materials have been delivered to our schools. The next slide is our individual student support category. And this is where we allocated $4.3 million. The balance is zero. We have six district-wide literacy coaches and 14 school-based literacy coaches in this category. And this, their salaries have been encumbered for the entire year. We also have the Edge Annuity and Illuminate licenses and we allocated funds for tutoring for our comprehensive schools. Students with disabilities, in the original application, we had three teachers, but we have another funding source for special education. So we allocated this amount for one 504 employee. And this amount is for two years that has been encumbered. Our social, emotional, and mental health category, our allocation is 904, 500. And in this allocation, we have six social workers and 10 nurses. And their salaries in the contract has been encumbered. For our feeding child nutrition program, our allocation is $250,000 and we still have that balance. Sanitation and training supplies is a half a million and we also still have that balance of a half a million. Student devices and student connectivity. Our principals sent in a survey and they were in need of adapters for the Chromebooks that we purchased last year. So as you can see, $353,000 was spent on the adapters for the Chromebooks that are already in the schools. This slide is for ESER 3 Action 1. And you can see the allocation on the slide. So this balance for our Smart Start program, we still have that balance because our Smart Start program will be in October, April, and May. So the account has not been charged. So that's why you see the balance of $2.3 million. Then you see the list of our academic programs and employees that we've hired. And again, the salaries are encumbered for the entire year. You see the math supervisor, the math coaches, and we have 36 ESL instructional specialists and art teachers. And you can see the contracts that we've also, those services have been delivered to our staff and teachers. Again, the next slide represents contracts and also core subject materials and supplemental books that have been distributed to our schools. Technology software and we still, we have a balance of $386 for HVAC. We allocated $830,000 for a one-month supplement for our guidance counselors and that has been charged to our account. We have a balance of zero for our social and emotional workers because we encumbered their salaries till the end as well. We have a balance of $97,000 for the Council Foundation and the Rethink licenses is a balance of zero. Any questions?
Board Member Howard.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. I think my first question is related to a couple of these online items deal specifically with salary allocations. And so we know that this money is not like reoccurring money. And I know at the beginning of this process, we talked about utilizing this money to build capacity within schools. Once this timeframe runs out, for example, school counselors, they'll want the salary for a year. Do we, is it still capacity building as our end goal? Or what are we planning to do once that time runs out?
Okay. The, for the counselors, that-
Well, just, that was an example, but I'm talking about all of the, I didn't mean to cut you off, but all of the utilizations of this money to provide salaries past the time that's allocated within the line item. Like, what is our plan?
Yes, sir. We've met as a group. So some of the salaries will be charged to general fund after the grant is over. Now ESER 2, we have two years for the salaries. ESER 3, we have three years. So after the grant ends, some of the salaries will be charged to general fund, Title 1 and Title 4, and also the tax proposition.
And if I could just add to that, Board Member Howard, I think the question, you may be trying to make sure it's about sustainability. What we're doing in the process, as you know, the budget is static. We are also in the process of indicating programs that we're going to be, that we're currently stopping and personnel that we will be removing around old programs to re-shift to ensure that these allocations, when they go into the fund, the fund balance is zero. So there's no additional allocation. So we don't become a district where, I think you said it one time before, we're in the red. And so that has been our process that we've been doing around that work.
Thank you. Just again, for my visualization, it would be good to see a visual of said salary will then go to general fund, like how the shifts actually look. Cause, you know, we're talking about this today and then a year from now, we'll be trying to make decisions. And if we can't follow the process, I think that would be helpful for me and I'm assuming my colleagues as well. Then my second question or concern is I see that in many of these allocations, for example, for core subject curriculum, supplement, student achievement, there is a list of programs and things that we've bought with this money. I know we've asked for this before and I know that there was a presentation given of how we're following these contracts. But for my own, again, visualization, I would like to see like what are our pre-goals before we got these programs, what the data say that, as to why we need this? And then how are we tracking it along the way? Similar to formative assessments at the beginning of the year before school starts and then at the end of the year, just so that we can see like how these programs are actually providing student achievement rooted in data, not just because we say we need said programs. Cause one of my critiques of the district since I've been on the board is that we've always been very good at buying programs, but we still find ourselves presenting some of the same outcomes with a total like litany of all of these programs that are not really doing anything for student achievement. So if we're gonna label these as student achievement, I would like to see how we're tracking student achievement with said programs. Just for, again, my, and if we can get like a quarterly report, it doesn't have to be a board item, but it's something to just update us on how these programs are hitting or missing the marks that we set for our goals. Thank you.
And Board Member Howard, great question. If I could just add addition to that because board leadership and I had a conversation around that. Just also, our goal is to push every report that we give moving forward is based off the strategic plan that this board has indicated because we now have KPIs and performance metrics. And that will be our presentation as we come to show how there's a return on investment in these investments to those targets. And also, just to add, which was going to be a part of my next announcement, we will also be creating a strategic plan dashboard that will also be public to the community. Amy Jones and Team Technology are actually working on that. We'll be prepared by, we will have it by the end of the month that we will share at the board meeting to show to the public where are, in each of our cornerstones with KPIs and actual dashboard that will show our baseline around where kids are under student achievement, where we are under operational efficiencies. And our presentations that we even do here will be geared towards the strategic plan as that will be our driving force in terms of our performance as a district.
Thank you. I have some questions. And I do share the concerns that my colleague just raised. With regard, I wanna make sure that I took good notes on, for example, the 501 for coordinator salary position. You had mentioned it was encumbered. Is that amount, 195, two years?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, two years. So then-
It's for two years, including benefits.
I was gonna ask, including benefits. Okay. And if you don't, if I'm putting you on the spot, I apologize cause I know there's only so many details you can just have on the top of your head. What's that salary amount? The yearly salary amount for that particular position?
For the 504?
Yes, ma'am.
Person? I encumbered it for the two years plus the benefits. So the salary average is-
The 97.5 for two years of the 195. 97.5 is per year. My question is just simply, how much were the benefits and the-
The benefits average, I can't tell you like specific now, but the benefits are about $27,000.
Okay. Health insurance?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. $27,000. And retirement and stuff like that?
Yes, ma'am.
And we can get you that exact number, Vice President Collins. I can have HR, Ms. Donaldson will send that to you.
No problem. Again, like I said, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot with firm numbers. That child nutrition program supplies, he says, not encumbered?
It's, that's the balance. We haven't received invoices.
Gotcha, 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 gotcha. Who's receiving the sanitation, training, and supplies?
The schools are receiving all the sanitation supplies. This is the category in our electronic grant system. It's sanitation, training, and supplies. But we have purchased-
Oh. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
The category is sanitation, training-
Training and supplies.
So not necessarily saying we training staff to do the sanitation?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay. All right. Okay, okay, okay.
We have purchased temperature devices, gloves, things like that for our schools.
Okay. And then, can we go? I would like to recommend, and I'm vice president, not president, but my colleague was asking about a presentation on the evidence-based activities academic, you know, the student achievement or operational excellence with the programs and contracts, et cetera. Can we go ahead and just get the first presentation and then proceed quarterly? Can we get that first presentation at our board retreat next week on, okay, we said we needed a math supervisor, this is the, and 20 math coaches, or we needed to work with TNTP, Reimagine, proximity learning. You know, that was based on such and such and we expect such and such and so far this is where we at type of thing, as my colleague requested.
Yes, Board Vice President Collins, we can provide a presentation. Just wanted to just give you just perspective on that. Remember that we are currently, school is back and we're getting baseline data right now. So kids are just taking tests and those things. So our goal is to actually show you the baseline data so we can know as we start making progress and showing the dashboard as we present that we can see the return on investment.
Okay. And that's excellent. And then we wanna be able to compare, you know, as my colleague mentioned, we wanna be able to compare that to what we did before. And so we can have a true picture.
Absolutely.
And so if we can just get the history and then when y'all come with the baseline data, we can be like bam, you know, awesome. You know, and it give us a rounded picture. And that is, that's all. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bethley. And I have one last item is just, just to keep to the forefront. As you know, the hurricane hit, we had to kind of pause a little bit and become hurricane recovery mode. So now, as we begin to adjust back into schooling, just wanted to keep top of mind, we, with the Castle Foundation visit, they were supposed to be here during the time of the hurricane. So Stacy Dupree and team has been working tremendously hard on getting them to do an assessment on our districts. So we just want to keep in mind that our social, emotional learning continues this week as the Castle Foundation is beginning their first round of team interviews and needs assessment across the district. We're excited to learn more about their findings and begin implementing this work across the system. We will be, the tool that they're using there, Accella, to present, we will be providing that information to the board to see where the social, emotional needs of our district is as we are strategizing. So please expect that presentation as soon from the Castle Foundation and Ms. Dupree as soon as that report is ready. And that is my report, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Superintendent. Excuse me. Now moving forward with item C2, procurement overview by Mr. Williams.
President Tamman, Vice President Collins, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Narcisse. Good evening. I want to share with you briefly, very briefly, an overview of a couple of more complex procurement processes. And we'll do that with just a brief slide presentation. The strategic plan cornerstone is operational excellence. We're working on that and hope to improve every day in that regard. The difference between an RFP and an RFQ, I incorporated the RFQ because we do about as many RFQs as we do RFPs, particularly related to architects. This is a method of procurement used for complex services. It may include equipment, it may just be services. If we are seeking a proposal where we're asking a vendor to tell us how they would solve a problem for us, then we would be asking, we would be presenting an RFP, Request for Proposal. If we are wanting to find qualifications, in particular, that comes up with architects and engineers and also other types of consultants. For public information, it's good to understand that architects and engineers cannot be acquired on a price basis. That it is illegal to consider price as a competitive element when you hire an architect or an engineer. That comes about because of the nature of their work, health and safety primarily. And the state long ago determined that it's not a good practice to have that as a matter of price. There is a formula adopted by the state that's approved to calculate their fees and that's what's used. So with architects and engineers, there's never any graded consideration of the cost of that. With education consultants and others, then in that case, we would actually ask for a quote along with their qualifications, an RFQQ. I didn't put that in the slide, it just makes it more complicated. But we would ask for their cost or their price if we are seeking an education consultant, some type of expert outside the areas of architects and engineering. Okay, next slide. The steps, and this is very basic in the interest of time and I'll just allow you to ask questions when we get through this part. Board approval to issue an RFP or RFQ can come about several ways. You all, if you recall, you all actually gave procurement a blanket approval to process bids and RFPs when it is standard thing, standard stuff. Budgeted items, projects that you know about that are repeated on a regular basis. You all have given us the latitude to perceive with that without specific board approval and I appreciate that a lot. It definitely expedites our work, makes your job and my job easier. Project planning, determining what we need, what problem are we gonna try to solve? We have to do that internally among the staff. Then we draft an RFQ or an RFP or an RFQ to get to that point. We issue those, they're advertised in the advocate and we use the electronic medium BidExpress. We use BidExpress primarily because of the large number of renovation and construction capital works projects, public works projects. BidExpress is very in tune and has the mechanism to deal with those drawings and the complexity of construction bidding. I actually wanted to use LaPAC, the state's website, which I was familiar with from my years at LSU. The problem is I didn't think it was reasonable to have two mechanisms working at the same time. BidExpress works fine- BitExpress works fine. It's a little, it's lesser known than LaPAC, but always vendors can get to our proposals, they can get to our RFPs and RFQ documents without any cost. And so that's a good benefit. The next step, of course, is, once the time has elapsed, and generally, almost always, 30 days is allowed to process an RFP and RFQ, we will review the proposal. A committee is established to score the proposals. Next slide. A recommendation would be made to the board. There are some courtesies, some common courtesies that are done. We may issue a letter that says we intend to make this award, always pending board approval. There is no specific law that regulates exactly how that's done. It's all a matter of courtesy. The entire intent is fairness and equal treatment so that vendors are all on the same page, they all have the same information to work from. I have one statement I want to share with you. And I'm going to read it because it's a little bit complicated, but I think it covers a topic very well that the public needs to know about. It's important for the public to realize that this process is intended to solicit complex services products or expert service firms or individuals who are most competent at a fair price. A point-based scoring process provides a mechanism to make a fair selection from competing vendors based on stated criteria that is known by all involved as the process starts. That said, there are circumstances that warrant the board's special consideration of factors best known by the board. In some situations, boards may choose to waive the score committee recommendation and select a different vendor to proceed with the project. As a public elected entity, this is entirely legal and no offense should be taken by any party involved in that process. With that, that completes what I prepared, and certainly questions are in order.
Board Member Tattman.
Thank you, Madam Vice.
I'm sorry, Board President Tattman.
That's all right. Thank you, Madam Vice President. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir.
I had the, I don't know if I'm going to say the pleasure, but I served on one of the committees to, on the Jefferson Terrace project. And my biggest fear was that my scores would be an outlier, right?
Right, I understand.
And I worked really hard, and it takes, it takes a lot of time, particularly on the larger ones. I felt like I put a week's worth of work into really studying the proposals. But I just have, have a couple of questions. How do you decide? Like, I'm not really quite sure why I serve. I mean, I know Jefferson Terrace rebuild was going to be in my district, but how do you decide who is going to be on that selection committee?
That is something that can be determined multiple ways. The law does not prescribe who particularly has to be involved in that process. Generally, you're going to pull together those who have the greatest vested interest internally in what happens with that. It would be school people, facilities people, education people. I mean, that, a building project is so complex, it involves all the different areas, educational areas to facility maintenance. So staff, administration has to determine internally who will serve. Now, in the case of our architect selection, those are actually named. The positions are named in the document. I can't, I don't want to have those to list for you, and I'm not intimately familiar with the architect selection process, although I've worked with those to some degree, and we're issuing a new one next week for the K, pre-K through 12, the new school project, that will go live next week.
I'm not volunteering for anymore, I just wanted to make that pretty clear.
Unless you have that experience, you can't imagine, you're right, how complex that is.
How many people typically serve on that selection committee?
It can range from, you know, a building, construction project is probably going to be five to eight members. Again, there's no prescribed number. It should be adequate to cover all of the areas involved.
Okay, do you, do you try to find area, people who have some expertise in a particular area to serve on that? I mean, I realize you, I mean, is it always internal? Is it always people who are working within our district?
Well, there actually is an external person, and I'm trying to think which, which position is. Somebody might can help me with that. There is an external person on the architect selection. It actually is an architect, I'm sorry. It is, it is an uninvolved architect.
Yeah, I recall that, yeah, right. That's not bidding on the project, or not part of a.
But you certainly want to, you know, with a school building project, you certainly want to have maybe a principal, even a teacher in some cases may be involved in that. That's not outside the realm of consideration because they're going to need, they'll have a vested interest in what happens with that.
How do you handle on, like I told you, one of my fears was when I went through the process that I was going to be, you know, everyone was going to be giving somebody a 20, and I was going to give them a seven, you know? And so that I was somehow missing something or didn't have the expertise. And I did feel inadequate, but I would admit, most of my scores were very consistent with the other people who were on. And I think it just is, you have to study really hard and really look at it, and so on and so forth. Do you, do you often in the scoring system see outliers? Like a scorer, an individual scorer that is way off? And how do you handle that?
Well, I have always issued a guide. I like to use the 100-point scale. Use 100 points as the basis, just simpler to work with mathematically, and people understand it better. If you do that, I use a guide that tells them, if you score 90%, it sort of means this, and there's a description of what 90% is, 80%, 70%. In order to head off that extreme disparity by that outlier who is just naturally going to score low, but remember, when that happens, that person's scoring everybody the same way. If he scored one vendor low, he's probably scoring everybody lower than the rest of the crew. So it's a balance. Even though somebody may score low, I don't very oft, in my own experience, I don't very often see an outlier that's on one vendor. If that's the case, the vendor has done something very poorly, maybe presented a poor proposal, it wasn't put together well, and didn't answer all the questions, then you're going to see multiple members score that vendor low.
Sure.
And you can explain that.
Yeah, and I don't want to beat this, I just, a couple, you brought up BitExpress. Is this something that, like, the people who want to do business with the district, they sign up for it so they kind of get the bids?
Yes, we advertise that we're going to use, that we use BitExpress. Just so you all are aware and the public is aware, around the state, school boards, there is a electronic source for bidding for every different school board in the state. Unfortunately, I've asked in meetings that the state consider some kind of consolidation and have all of the school board activity on one or two or three companies. That's getting nowhere, and I understand why, that's complicated. But that BitExpress is who we use. We've used them for many years. I can't tell you the start date, but it's been a very long time. And there's not an issue with that, I don't think. In fact, the upcoming RFP that we're, the RFQ that we're doing for the architect selection, I have prescribed that they must collect those documents from BitExpress. They have a tracking system. It is very burdensome for us to email those documents, and in the COVID pandemic environment, have all these people come in to collect the paper documents. So you will see in the advertisement a very express description of BitExpress. Go there, register, collect all the documents, they can get them in Word. They want those documents in Word, they can get them there that way.
Well, thank you. Look, I appreciate your work, I wouldn't want your job. So thank you for what you do, I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you for saying that.
Thank you, Board President. Special, not special counsel, General Counsel Shamlin.
I'll be special counsel if you want me to. I want to respond to Mr. Tattman's question about how committee members are appointed. Our policy actually speaks to that and says a superintendent and/or his designee appoints those persons. It doesn't talk about qualifications or any other requirements, but it is a duty of the superintendent, and in this case, Mr. Williams is the designee. So just wanted to make that clarity.
Thanks.
Thank you. Board Member Connie Benard.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Mr. Williams, when people start on the committee, do you ask them to sign a document that states that they don't have a relationship with any of the, something like that?
Absolutely, conflict of interest. We have a conflict of interest form. That's the very standard procedure to have every committee member sign off specifically on that, that they have, they have no direct family members. It's pretty specific what it covers.
Right, and also I think the organization that's named that the architect is from the American Institute of Architects, the local chapter. I'm not sure if you were trying to remember which organization.
That's right.
Yeah, AIA.
Thank you, that is the person who's named.
Thank you.
Board Member Ware Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Mr. Williams, or Mrs. Shamlin, with the documents that we have, do we have like some standard documents that we use? Or standard questions that are usually included? Or are there any commonalities that we've, that we consistently use? And I'm wondering if at some point, the documents that we, that we use for the RFQs and RFPs at some point was approved by the board?
I'm going to let Mr. Shamlin address that last piece that you just mentioned, but let me say that the RFP document itself is not a single boilerplate for everything.
Right.
That is a product of there not being any requirement for that. And for example, when I came from LSU with my 10 years' experience there, they had document, they had RFP documents that I liked. They included some detail and some of the wording. So I've actually incorporated some of that into some of ours because it's not prescribed. Now, it could be, the board certainly has the latitude to prescribe a particular template and say, only use this. I personally, I wouldn't recommend that unless there's some issue we're trying to address with that in particular. Because it's good to have some latitude, because there's quite a bit of difference at times when you're, an RFP for electronic components and services is quite different than an RFP for some other financial management services. So the latitude is good, the core elements are all there. Don't misunderstand now, the core elements that are required to make it consistent, to make it fair, to make it a level playing field for the vendors, is all there, regardless of which template it is. And then all the legal requirements are there.
Do you generally use the same point scale? Or the different criteria that's in the point scale? Or does that change depending on what the intended outcome is?
You will find our point scale to be fairly consistent, I believe. I haven't actually examined that element, but most of the time, it's 100-point scale, and the elements you see listed are rather broad. But they have to be in order to do a fair evaluation. You can't be overly specific in your criteria, or you make it so complicated, it would be difficult to score fairly, if that makes sense. But yes, I think you'll find a great deal of consistency in the way we do scores. The score sheets many times are almost duplicated from one RFP to the other if they are similar in product or service.
And is it, is it based on something that's directed from the board? If the board is specifically looking for certain qualities, is that usually included somewhere in the RFQ or RFP that would encourage that sort of thing?
Yes, ma'am, I'm not aware that there is a, I'll let Mr. Shamlin correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think there's a board policy that prescribes the elements in the scoring at all. And again, that's something that the board could address if they choose to. But there is latitude in that.
Well, I was looking at some differences in, let's say, we had a couple of samples that were provided. Thank you for sending those. And looking at the different criteria, most of them were the same. You had like five consistent ones. And I noticed in the RFP that, that we sent out not too long ago around maintenance, it mentioned that the board was looking for certain elements and that they would appreciate having those elements in the RF, in the proposal, and there was certain weight given to that. Like, there were six categories instead of five, and there was weight given. You know, it was still a 100-point system, but there were a couple of different things. And I wondered if that was specific because of some, something that came from the board that would have caused him to put that in there?
I don't think so. That, that facilities RFP is probably the most complicated one we do. It would have, generally could have more categories. Are you saying, I believe it has six categories? I'd have to look at it to tell you. There may, that one may be a little non-standard because it's quite complicated. We're actually considering, actually having, hiring individual companies to do grounds or janitorial, or they could do all of it. So that is a fairly complex RFP as far as they go. It would look a little different than the standard. That's our largest spend, actually, I believe, in a contract arrangement that we do as an RFP. That's by far the largest spend for the district.
So within the RFP or the RFQ that the, the district sends out and the participants agree to abide by everything in the, in the RFP, are we bound to follow our own procedure? Can we veer off from what the, what's expected in the RFP or RFQ as far as the steps moving forward and?
Well, we do have the statement in all of those somewhere that says that there are certain details that can be waived if they're not significant. I would say generally, you don't want to do that, and I would let Mr. Shamlin comment further legally on that. But I would not want to change, now, you can make a change if you do an addendum and post it. If you publish an addendum, you effectively change the RFP to the new statements to make it match. For example, Mr. Landis, you had asked about having the, the fair share percentage increased. We did that. We did it with an addendum, we moved it from 20% to 50% as a goal. That wasn't done in an addendum. But we would not want to say to them 20%, and then show us 20%, and us have decided by the time we score that we want more than that. We would not want to make that kind of change without some sort of legal notice in the form of an addendum. Am I on the right track to answer your question?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, I know, I noticed in the RFQQ, there were five elements that were of importance, and they were all weighted the same. And I'm wondering, because in the, the last one, well, this sample I'm using is from the, the very last one that we did in completion that I'm aware of. When it came to the board, the board decided that there was something that was more important, or it weighed heavier with the board than any of the, the criteria descriptions listed. And, and there were things in it that we hadn't done as far as the notice of intent to award. Respondents hadn't been informed that this was on the agenda. And I wondered how, you know, how that comes about? If, or are we bound to do that?
Well, let me comment on that. We're not, we're not bound, that's a courtesy to do that. And the notice is not that it'll be on the agenda. The notice is that we intend to make an award. If for any reason, I'm just, I'm going to tell you this, just, I'm going to be honest with you. I felt like there could be some contention about, this is very close to the board. This is a one-off, okay? Once every 10 years is this process of board reapportionment. So obviously, you all have a vested interest more closely than perhaps other things as to how this goes and to who does that work. So I took it upon myself not to issue the letter in advance that says we intend to make this award. There is no prescribed rule of law, the board does not have a policy at this point that says. The board does not have a policy at this point that says when that would be done. Normally, in the normal process, I will go ahead and issue the letter that says, "We intend to make this award pending board," it always says pending board approval. I did not do that in this case because I felt like it might be less appropriate in this case. And that, I'll, I'll take my, my licks on that. That may have been a mistake on my part. If it was, then it is what it is.
So does that mean that the participants are bound by the agreement or by the RFQ guidelines, but the district isn't?
The board has the latitude to, as I said earlier, the board has the latitude to dismiss a committee decision anytime related to services, professional services. That's the board's option to do that and it's, that's, it's clearly legal, it's in the law.
Right.
You guys are elected by the public, you answer to the public, so if you wish to proceed in some other direction, that's fine. And, and as I say, no one should be offended by that.
Right, right. That's, that's our prerogative. The, I just wondered about, you know, if, if, for instance, in, I, I, you know, after looking at the, the elements in the RFQQ, and I, I remember seeing a statement that said that something to the, something like the, the board is favorable towards a vendor having a diversity partner in their, in their application. And, and I know this has come up a lot in a lot of, in many other conversations about diversity partners. Yet there was not any weight in, in this RFQQ, but I did notice that in the RFP for maintenance, a similar statement was made, but there is weight there, at least 10% for, and it's, it's called fair share compliance in this, in this situation.
Right, right.
And it's split with general performance record. Is, is there any reason that, and the RFQ would be different in that way? Or was, was that something that was just?
I would, I would share this thought with you. In the instance of pursuing a facilities management company, we're speaking of hundreds of employees. In the instance of the RFQQ with, with the reapportionment, we're speaking of one small firm.
Right.
Probably a couple of people who would be working on a project. And so I see that difference in the significance of that requirement. Does that kind of make sense?
Uh, yeah, yeah. It, it makes sense in that, you know, you're not dealing with as, as many, as many would be affected. It would mostly be members of the, the board that would be dealing with this particular company. Let me see, I have several of them. In that decision with, with the board, basically kind of changing, changing its mind, was anything other than the, the five general criteria descriptions, was anything other than, than those things brought from the, from the board as, as far as what we were looking for? What, what I, I guess what I'm trying to, to figure out is with, with all of the, the work that was done, because this was issued maybe six, six, seven months ago, and about how many times did the, the groups meet? You know, how much work goes into these types of?
Well, one, one of that nature with a smaller firm and a lesser complex task in the sense of the amount of things involved, the work is less significant, yes. And the time, the time span wasn't so much about the time involved in evaluating all of the proposals. It wasn't, wasn't burdensome, I would say. I guess I would say that.
About how much, if you had to just estimate about how much staff time goes into these types of endeavors?
Oh, that's a tough one. Are you speaking from preparation to completion?
Yeah.
It's a lot of hours. I can't, I can't effectively put a number on that because it's gonna vary with each one. It's sort of like, it's sort of like dealing with people. Every one of those has its own personality and its own various nuances that need consideration or the proposals, how they look, what forum they're in. There's a lot of variables that make that a very complex question to answer, but it's significant. It is significant, the amount of time and effort to, to go through the whole process and the expense. Also, I'm always very mindful of the expense to the vendors. We follow up almost always with a debriefing time and I didn't, that's not mentioned in the short presentation, but we allow the vendors to come back to the table and sit with us. And I always appreciate being able to tell them why they did not get the award. And I think that's important to do when they want that because they invest a lot of their time and energy and money into these proposals and statement of qualifications as well.
Right, yeah. So there's usually about five, five people from the district, normally from the district, that are involved with the, the whole process?
Well, the-
The ones that actually do the scoring?
Yes. Five to seven in the scoring. And in the production of one, you know, multiple people are involved in what it takes to get one together to advertise, get one produced to print, to advertise.
And there's a significant, a significant amount of time that, that goes into it.
Yes, ma'am. We do, I was, I was thinking about this earlier. We do, since I've, I've been here, this is the end of my sixth year, we do in the range of five to seven RFPs, specific RFPs each year, along with the 20, about 20 major bids and then countless quotes and that sort of thing.
So the five categories with about 20 points, you know about how long the school system has done it this way?
Well, not only the school system, but other agencies. If you look at other agencies, RFPs, RFQs, you'll find almost exactly the same thing. It's, it's very consistent in that regard. Over a very long span of time.
Have we considered adding the, something about being a local, a local vendor to that point system? And I asked that question because it seemed like that was the, the over, overruling or overbearing criteria that, that the board used in the decision-making to, to use the company that was actually chosen?
Yes, ma'am, but I think that's very specific to this RFP. Because of the nature of that work, I understand that the board's gonna want somebody close at hand. If you tried to do that across the board, that would be problematic because, for example, financial, the financial management software RFP is out there. We could not say that that has, that we're gonna favor a local company. There's not anyone to do that. So that wouldn't fit in that realm at all. So I think that distinction is there. This is a, this RFQQ you're speaking of is just a one-off. It's, it's once every 10 years. It is very unfamiliar to any committee who's going to look at it. It is much more familiar to board members who are gonna be involved and directly affected by the result of that. So I, I feel your pain in that regard.
Well, the, the, the pain, the, the pain that, that I have in the, in the processes that, that I'm seeing is, you know, if we ask for, if we ask for certain things very early, we can, you know, we'll tend to get more of what, of what we want. And there are some situations where we actually have to, by law, we have to issue an RFP or an RFQ. And there are some situations where we, we don't have to. And I think this was one of those situations, right, Mr. Shamblin? We did not have to issue an RFQ, but we did, I, I believe it was to help with being transparent and building public trust.
Well, I think also, Miss Jackson, the board actually gleaned a great deal of information from the process even without accepting the committee's recommendation. The way I see it, it was valuable to the board without accepting the recommendation of the committee. The, the work that was done was valuable to the board and to look and see, and to an inside look at what we see, what we saw in that, in those vendors in that process.
Well, with a situation like this, is, I, I think we might wanna consider using that process when we need it and perhaps not using it if, if, you know, if, if the board has come to a consensus about a particular company or a particular issue instead of going through six or seven months of, of time and lots of work, lots of resources from the district, from our employees, and like you said, all of the expense and hard work that vendors have to do to actually compete for, for contracts dealing with the, with the district. So when we, we say certain things are important, it would be helpful if we put those things upfront in, in our requests instead of waiting until basically the, the last minute to, to really say what we want.
Understood.
That's basically, you know, me to the, to my colleagues. That has nothing to do with you, of course.
Miss Jackson, let me, let me interrupt you too. It reminds me also that in this, in this particular RFQQ, there was no time urgency greatly because I don't think, I'm not certain the statistics for the census are even available yet. If they are, they just have become available recently, if at all.
Right, right.
So the work, I guess my point is the work couldn't have been done up to this point anyway.
Right. Now, there's a couple of other things in there. I noticed in the RFQQ, it was, there was a, a statement specific about contact, that the, the participants were to have one sole contact throughout this process and that would be you?
Yes, ma'am.
And I think all of them, as, as far from my experience, all of them had, have been very respectful of that. And I think that's part of the reason that we, we put those things out there and we have a committee handle it. You know, it's not in the superintendent's hands anymore, the, it's, you know, it's, it's away from the board.
Miss Jackson, it helps ensure, it does ensure that all vendors get the same questions and the same answers.
Right.
You, you never want a situation where the vendors are clamoring to some particular party within the system to get inside information that other vendors don't have. That creates a lot of dissension and, and can lead to legal issues.
Right, right. And I didn't see the same, the, the same type of, or, or level of, of, I don't know what you'd call it. In the RFQQ, it sounded like it was, you were, it was very, very straightforward, you know? Do not contact anybody other than the, the procurement officer. But in the RFP, it wasn't as, as strict?
Let me, let me, let me add something to this as well. This is my first exposure in 40 years of doing this to doing an RFQQ for this service. I've never seen it before. We simply used the, the RFQQ from 10 years ago primarily because it, I looked at some others, they're all about the same. And that was the language that existed in the previous RFQQ. So I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to say I didn't do it, I did it. But we used the previous RFQQ because I had very little information or knowledge about this particular service. And most people don't.
That's a good thing.
Unless you've been, unless you're a board member 10 years ago, then you don't know about this much.
I think that's a good thing to have in there about, you know, not contacting the, the board.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, in these kinds of situations. And so I'm wondering, like in the RFP process, like with the one that, that we have coming with the, the maintenance, you know, how does, how do, how does that work with, you know, you know, we may get calls, we may get, you know, people wanting to wine and dine and, you know, influence the board on this decision. And, you know, that, that's not a place where the board wants to be. So I saw that really clearly in the RFQQ, but not in the RFP.
Well, it's, it's very clear in the RFP in practice because I, I am the only person communicating. I have that contact group of all those vendors. They are only communicating with me as far as I know and they have been told in the mandatory meeting and at other times that they need to funnel all their questions and concerns through me. It's burden, very burdensome for me, but it's also the proper process to be sure that all those people have the same information to work with.
I had a little bit of clarification around that question too because it's come up several times. And our purchasing policy is actually, language specifically states that employees, employees are not to participate in the awards process if there's a conflict of interest. It's my understanding this language was placed in to, to avoid the potential for the creation of a conflict of interest. If we can say that no one contacts a board member during this process, it's much easier to say the process is solid versus if there are lots of contacts. So I believe that's the source of the language. That's why it was placed in. It's really more a protection. It's not a legal requirement, but it is in our policy. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear and kind of clarified to help you maybe understand why that language has been included.
Well, I'm, I'm grateful that the language is there, but I just wanna make sure that the, the vendors really understand that.
Miss Jackson, if a vendor calls you, you can simply tell them like that you should not be talking to them about all this. Call Larry Williams and discuss it with him.
And they, they should already know that.
They should know that, but you're certainly welcome to repeat that to them if you get a call like that.
Yeah, well, I just wondered if, you know, because, you know, the board wasn't involved with, with the, the meeting, so we don't know, you know, what the rules were except for looking at the, the documents, you know, themselves. And, and as far as the, the scores go, how do you determine, was, was there a, a particular phase where you may have, you know, some move forward and, and how many, how many actually on a, on a, in general, or you can use that example with the RFQQ, how, how many applicants did we actually have in the beginning and then, you know, the process of, do you weed them out? Do you weed them down and get down to?
With, with the RFQQ, there were three.
Only three?
There were, there were three applicants. As you can imagine, there's not a huge number of those firms out there. That work is basically spread among, there, there are some others out there, but some of them are far enough removed from this community, they would obviously assume that they wouldn't be in contention. They've got their own, I think they're sort of territorial to some degree and they're gonna work within their region that they can get to, get back and forth from comfortably.
Yeah, and I, I think all of those guys are probably accustomed to moving- Yeah, and I, I think all of those guys are probably accustomed to moving all around the state to do this kinda work.
Yes, ma'am.
If they've been doing that kind of work. Um, so with, uh, the, the points, the point spread, it seemed, and I remember in the, the board meeting, um, as we were talking about this, um, one of the, the, one of our board members mentioned that the, the, the spread was not, there was only like a three or four, or two or three point spread, uh, between the, the, between the contenders and, um, but there were two, right, that actually, in the process, do you eliminate and then you move some forward in, in that small group that you're working with?
You could, you could do that. In a less complicated project like this, you wouldn't typically do that. You would simply go with a, the high score as, as the winner. It is uncomfortable when it's down to just a few points. That also speaks to the fact that there were three really good companies that were vying for the work, and they all had good credentials, you know, they, they had a good record as far as we could tell. Yeah, I mean, it is a pretty straightforward kinda process for those that are focused on that business.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, it was mentioned that there was like a, a three or four, uh, point spread, uh, but that was between the top two, and the ones that, the, the company that we chose actually had, was twenty-five points behind the, um, the top two. Uh, so it seemed like we put a whole lot of weight on where the person lived instead of, um, the qualifications and, uh, everything else that the, the six months or so of, of work that, uh, that was done for us. Um, and, uh, I don't have, you know, I, I don't have any, any problem with, um, the choice that we made as, as far as, um, the work, 'cause, you know, we've worked with, you know, with that company, not that company, but that particular person before, and, uh, the last time we did that, and, um, you know, we worked well, every, everybody, you know, nobody had any complaint, so, you know, no, uh, no issue there. But I would just hope that moving forward, we would, um, avoid doing something unnecessarily and, and spend a lot of time and, and money, um, on a project, and then later come back and say, well, that's not, those things that, that's, that you worked on and the things that are, are important or seemed important to the, to the contract is not the real thing. What we really want is somebody that's, that's local. Um, so if we would just, you know, say what we mean in the beginning, it would, it would save the, the whole process a lot of work, and, um, I'm hoping that that will, that will be the, um, at least one good thing that, that comes out of, um, of doing a review and, and really taking a look at it.
Ms. Jackson, I've learned a lot from this process and in this particular issue. I'm happy to tell you I won't be around for the next one.
(laughing).
I will be retired before the next ten years rolls.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, um, I, I, hm, I seeing no other, uh, board colleagues in the queue, I, uh, I appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Uh, in particular, when we voted on the last RFQ, I was not vocal, but I did vote no. Um, I wasn't offended and remain unoffended that Danny Garrett, uh, got the contract. He was the lowest scoring by twenty-five points of the three, but, uh, that being said, they, you know, if you look at it by letter grade, you know, if you convert it to letter grade, for example, you know, the top scorer was like a ninety-four percent rounding up, and that's a A. And then, uh, he, his, uh, con- contract is, uh, scored, his proposal, excuse me, uh, scored at an eighty-nine, which is a bit, but a high B, you know, so, you know, in that regard, not quite such a big deal. Uh, uh, so we have a competent person, uh, doing it because he's done it before, and so I, I, I don't have a problem with that. The bottom line is, we know he's competent because he's done it before. What I am offended by, however, is that we went through a process that was unnecessary, and then after going through that process, there are a couple of questionable things that happened. Um, and that's why I had to vote no, uh, the last time for the vote. Uh, again, I feel confident in the process moving forward. I think he's gonna do a fine job. He's done, uh, who we ended up with has done so in the past, but I do have to, uh, just lift up a couple of things from, uh, what my colleague, uh, Ms. Ware, Jack, Board Member Ware Jackson just mentioned. Uh, let's go to the point of potential contractors having the ability to educate board members. I, I think we should be clear, the, the conversation that was had previ- uh, with response to my colleague was not talking to employees. Board members are not employees. We vote on these things, and sometimes the people that want a contract want to explain to us what they presented because we're not part of the RFP process for the most part, and that's typical, and that's actually standard practice, period. Uh, and that's something that was deviated away from by virtue of the RFQ indication, okay? Um, another concern that I have, and again, I, I lift these things up not because I have a problem with who we ended up with or do, or that I feel like there's a lack of experience or competency, et cetera, but if we're gonna do a process that we didn't have to do, then make sure the process is not in question itself. Um, and then fine if we choose somebody else with a diff, with a lower score, but at least the process, you know, we chose him 'cause he was local, and, and, and he's been with us, not because, uh, the score, not because part of the scoring, you know, it was a twenty-five point difference despite the highest score in one being disproportionately, uh, scored less on experience when they had the most experience of the three contracts for the years. Um, notice policy or standard practice. It might not be a black and white policy, but legally, standard practice is standard practice, and one factor that's considered when people are concerned about how something happened is, well, what's your standard practice? Yeah, it's not in black and white, but what's your standard practice? And nobody was here to say and defend their, their bid. When we have people come up, and that's a different process, but we have people come up for, uh, other contracts or for charter schools, I mean, people make flight arrangements from out of state to come here and say, this is what my application was, and yeah, I know the recommendation was A, B, C, X, Y, Z, but this is why I feel like, you know, let me defend my application. And so, um, that's discouraging to me. Uh, and, and the last thing I'll say, um, is that the salt in the wound for me, and I'm gonna just go ahead and say what my colleague doesn't feel comfortable saying. The salt in the wound for me is that we saying we wanna do DBE, et cetera, and here we have somebody that could be the prime and be a DBE, and they got shortchanged on stuff like experience, which personally, as a black female, sometimes folks don't have qualifications and credentials necessary to make something happen, and that is the true reason why decisions were made, but it is also very common for inexperience to be used against highly qualified, for the, for the accusation of inexperience or lesser experience to be used against DBEs. And so, I didn't say anything in the, during the time of the vote, uh, I just voted, but after sitting through this process, hearing feedback, and Brother Williams, and, and I say that with love, that's why I'm, you know, I'm speaking with love, that's why I'm calling you Brother Williams in this moment, um, if we gonna do, if we gonna go through the problem of spending staff time, 'cause the, the only thing I learned was that the process (sigh) was not implemented with fidelity, in my opinion, okay? Um, and to me, that wasn't worth going through the RFP, RFQ process, uh, and it wasn't worth y'all's time. I'm okay with going with somebody that's qualified and has done it before and for us, just go with that person, uh, but if we put it out there, uh, you know, let's at least be fair in the process, and if we vote the way we vote still, even different from the recommendation, then fine, 'cause we've done that before. Uh, and that's all I have to say, and I appreciate the presentation, and I appreciate my colleagues for just letting me share my thoughts. Again, I'm happy to work, move and work forward in the process. I don't, you know, the process itself, I don't think is gonna be skewed in any way. I'm not concerned about anything like that. I just have that, I just had those things that I felt needed to be mentioned, and I appreciate it, and I'm gonna be quiet 'cause we spent a long time on this particular piece already. (laugh) Thank you. Uh, Council Shamlin, did you have something else to say? Okay, thank you, sir. Moving forward with item, uh, was that it from the procurement, uh, overview superintendent? Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank, thank you all very much.
All right, uh, item D1, grants. Consideration of a request for the approval of the following grants. A 2021 Supply Building and Access Expansion Grant in the amount of $100,000. To develop a strategic plan to expand seats and sustain funding for children under five. Uh, item 1B, Project Lead the Way Dial Southern University Grant in the amount of $90,000 to provide STEM training, project-based lessons, and materials needed to nine schools. Uh, can I get a motion? Thank you. A second? Thank you. Any comment from the board? Seeing none, any public comment? Oh, I didn't, it's not showing up on...
It's not showing up on mine either. No, I'm calling...
Oh, yes. (laugh) Yes, go there, dial it. Uh, seeing no public comment, excuse me. Uh, then back to the board, seeing no board comment. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote.
All right, moving forward with item, what is it, D2, Cooperative Endeavor, Cooperative Endeavor Agreement. Consideration of a request for the approval of a Cooperative Endeavor Agreement between East Baton Rouge Parish School System and Louisiana Department of the Treasury and the State of Louisiana in the amount of $200,000 for Act 119 of the 2021 Regular Legislative Session, State Aid to Local Government Entities to Provide Materials and Supplies for EBR Pathways to Bright Futures. All right, uh, first by Board Mem-, uh, Board President Tappman, and seconded by Board Seeing no board comment, any public comment? Back to the board, seeing no board comment. Madam Secretary?
Please vote.
Moving forward with item D3, Professional Services Contracts Pre-K. Uh, item, Consideration of a Request for the Approval of Professional Services Contracts Between the East Baton Rouge Parish School System and the Following. Katamba Management Incorporated in the Amount of $200,000 to Provide Data Collection and Support Services and Strategic, uh, Planning Alignment. B, Resourceful Consulting in the Amount of $75,000 to Develop a Multi-Year Strategic Plan to Sustain Funding and Expand Access to High-Quality Care and Education for Children Under Five. Can I get a motion? Board Member Lannis? Board Member Baloo? Any board comment? Yes, Board, Board Member Baloo, you had board comment?
Just, uh, briefly, in, in regard to the, um, Resourceful Consulting and Development of the Action Plan, just, uh, a quick comment, I, I would, uh, prefer that as we develop the plan and just looking at that we, we, uh, use plain language in developing the plan, you know, just looking through the proposal, it was hard getting through, it was just a lot of wonky and, and, uh, kind of trendy language. Uh, I think the name of the company is very clever, I like that, but, uh, um, I, just as an example, I think, uh, one of the deliverables or, or on the timeline was the term, um, ground truthing, which I don't, may be a common language for some people, I, I'm not familiar with that term, but I'm not too crazy about it, and I was able to figure out what it meant, but, um, that, that's just one example, but just a, that is my only comment, thank you.
Okay, uh, and then myself, on this one, I, I don't feel comfortable myself moving forward with it, uh, and my reason is, um, that it, looking at the back of materials, it comes across as putting a cart before the horse in the, in the sense of, we've already approved, uh, eight million dollars in expenses on pre-K things, we already in a position to have to have figured out how we gonna sustain all of that, uh, and so to say we need two, uh, the consult, two consulting firms to help us figure out what we should have figured out before we ask for the eight million dollars is too much to me, uh, and so I'm not gonna vote for this particular item. Uh, seeing no other board comment, any public comment? Seeing no public comment and seeing no board comment, Madam Secretary, please call the
Please vote.
Thank you. Moving forward with item D4, uh, Consideration of a Request for the Approval of Professional Services Contracts Between the East Baton Rouge Parish School System and the Following. Orbital in the Amount of $200,000 to Provide Professional Development and School Support. Uh, and, uh, strategic alignment is, uh, okay, I'm sorry, I don't need to read that. Uh, B, Louisiana Business, Inc., Doing Business as the Leadership Academy in the Amount of $182,720 to Develop and Enhance the Organizational Leadership Skills and Professionalism of EBR Parish School Systems Central Office Leaders. Uh, C, Agenuity in the Amount of $161,633 to Provide Grades K Through Second EL Education Well-Based Licenses. And then Agenuity in the Amount of $119,364 to Provide Grades 3 Through 5 Guide Books and Well-Based Licenses. Can I get a motion? Board Member Baloo, can I get a second? Board Member Goode... Board Member Goday? Can I just get clarity on the employee development that Arbinger will be doing? Superintendent?
Yes, Madam Vice President, we actually have, for the Arbinger, we actually have the Arbinger team on call.
Okay.
Just want to look at our tech folks, there we go. Hello, fellas. We did have them have a, just a few, a couple of slides for clarity, Vice President Collins.
Thank you very much.
So I'll allow the team to go ahead and talk on the Arbinger's side. Mike?
All right, can you hear?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, this is Mitch Warner, I'm a managing partner here. Mike Merchant, who you've been working with, and Dr. Janice Barclay unfortunately couldn't be with us tonight for other scheduling conflicts, but eager to answer any questions that you might have. There are really two components of the proposal here, following up on the strategic planning work that has already been done there. The first part of the work is to continue the implementation of that plan, and so that would include quarterly strategic plan implementation sessions with the board, and those, there would be a number of components that would be part of that implementation work, ongoing work. Now that the strategic plan is created, to gather on a quarterly basis and maintain an outward focus on achieving those strategic objectives, and ensure that there is a regular cadence of meeting together to report and improve and measure the performance. Really, the work is how to drive cross-functional collaborative helping when we identify in those quarterly meetings a variance from the plan to what we're actually achieving based on our measurable KPIs. How do we close that gap, and so that the strategic plan isn't one and done, but now that that's been created in a collaborative way by the board, to then move that into implementation over the course of a year? And then to ensure that there's real accountability to all of the stakeholder groups by the board. That's the first component of that proposal. The second component is to work with four pilot schools that would be identified by the board, as the board has been exposed to the outward mindset process and what that can do to improve performance, to actually take that into the school setting, and to identify with the board four pilot schools that are underperforming, identify the metrics together with the board that we believe could be improved based on the implementation of Arbinger's work. And then to use the economies of scale for those four schools to drive the cost down of implementing an outward approach within those schools, bring those teachers together, that staff together in order to train them, and then work with them over the course of a year to implement an outward mindset at the school level as measured by real student achievement data. And the data we would identify with the board and in collaboration with those schools, student achievement data, student behaviors resulting in reduced suspensions, looking at attendance, teacher growth and tenure, equity and inclusion, and identifying the measures there, parent engagement, school culture and climate. And the purpose of this, one board member said earlier, that I think like many organizations, to be good at buying programs but not correlating the data and having the discipline to show how these impact student achievement. Before implementing a broader rollout of the work that has been done with the board within the school district, to identify pilot schools and establish the data, gather that data, and prove out that implementing an outward mindset can drive real improvement in measurable results. So those are the two main components, the ongoing board implementation of the strategic plan, and four pilot schools to drive improved results using an outward mindset.
Thank you for the presentation, Board President Tapman.
Madam Vice President, I have a question on B, so I'll pass over.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions about the presentation with Arbinger, from Arbinger, excuse me? Okay, Board President Tapman?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Can, Dr. Narcisse, can someone talk about Louisiana Business, Inc., DBA, the Leadership Academy and what that is? Just want to, want to understand it. Yes, President Tapman, as the board, the year previously, we had the Louisiana Business Academy supported us with leadership development that was from principals into some central office members, a pilot that we saw, I think it was about, maybe we had about 40 folks who were part of that. One of the things that we learned as a part of our organizational operation team is that we had to give an opportunity to help our operational folks fully and better develop over the system to provide more efficiencies in our school district. So in this work, we decided to partner again with the Louisiana Business Group, as you know, they work also through the Business Report, to be able to help us with efficiencies in helping our operational group be able to look at, not only learn efficiencies and operations that we do here in the district, but also pair us up with other local businesses, large companies in Baton Rouge that help us to see how operational processes work, so we can drive towards our goals in our strategic plan. As you know, the board created KPIs for operational efficiencies, and their whole entire process would be to work us through that process at the various operational levels, and so that is where that context would be. Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other questions from the board, any public comment? Seeing no public comment, back to the board. Seeing no questions from the board. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
The motion carries.
All right, moving forward with item D5, Professional Services Contract Security. Consideration of a Request for the Approval of a Professional Services Contract Between the East Baton Rouge Parish School System and Navigate 360 in the Amount of $81,000 for Emergency Management Suite Platform Subscription. Can I get a motion? Board President Tapman? Seconded by Board Member Bernard. Seeing no questions from the board, any public comment? Back to the board, seeing no questions from the board. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving forward with item D6, Memorandum of Understanding with Grad's Give. Consideration of a Request for the Approval of an MOU between the East Baton Rouge Parish School System and Grad's Give to Provide Alumni Fundraising. Can I get a motion? Board Member Lannis, can I get a second? Board Member Ware Jackson? Seeing no questions from the board, any public comment? Back to the board. Board Member Lannis?
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Just want to be real quick on this, or brief on this particular item, and I'm speaking on this from a foundation board member standpoint. There was a lot of energy that went into trying to get the framework for this particular item correct, and Ms. Sarsfield, my hat goes off to her, she just wanted me to shout out Mr. Gwen Shammelin that helped to work through this and mitigate some of those issues. One of the issues was the timeframe, when they originally started off with the item, it started off at five years, they got it down to one year. Another thing was the data ownership, originally going into this professional service contract, Grad Gives wanted to own all of the data that they collected, but the problem with that was that it's our alumni base, and we're paying them, and a lot of that information should be turned over to us. So what Ms. Sarsfield and also Board Attorney Shammelin were able to do was, they were able to get it written inside of the MOU that we actually get all of that information after the term is up, and again, it's on a yearly basis, so I just wanted to report out on that again, take my hat off to Attorney Shammelin and Ms. Sarsfield.
Thank you, Board Member Lannis, and I just want to say I agree, you know, I was scratching my head at first, because we have a foundation, and it would have, you know, initially what they wanted would not have been beneficial to our foundation, i.e. our system. And so then I'm glad that we found a win-win for everybody, they getting paid a fee for service, and we getting what we need on our end to help us build our donor base, and so I think we came, you know, it's a great MOU that was come up with, thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
The motion carries.
Board Member Goday, did you hear?
Yes, I just want to tell you, on the next item, I will be recusing myself.
All right, item D7, Memorandum of Understanding, Our Lady of the Lake Children's Hospital. Consideration of a Request for the Approval of an MOU between the East Baton Rouge Parish School System and Our Lady of the Lake Children's Health to Provide Athletic Training Services and Three Full-Time Athletic Trainers to Support Middle Schools. Can I get a motion? Board Member Bernard, and seconded by Board Member Lannis. Seeing no further board questions or comments, public comment? Back to the board. Ms. Bernard, Board Member Bernard?
I don't know who I'm asking this question of, if it's Ms. Navo, Ms. Williamson, Dr. Williams, or Ms. Okonski, Dr., okay, Ms. Williamson, they are providing this gratis?
Yes, good evening, President Tapman, Madam Vice President Collins, Superintendent Narcisse, and members of the board. This is an in-kind grant worth about $150,000 to $160,000, it's an in-kind.
Thank you, I just wanted to make note of that and draw the public's attention to this generous donation from the Our Lady of the Lake Children's Health of three trainers in that amount, thanks so much.
You're welcome. Board Member Dyson?
I too just wanted to note that this is an in-kind donation, and it is very appreciated, and we appreciate our partnership with Our Lady of the Lake, so thank you.
Board Member Lannis?
I just wanted to be, I guess, to piggyback on what my other colleagues have already said about Our Lady of the Lake, thank them again for offering this generous service to our students, and also to our school system, and also thank you, Ms. Williamson, got the game cards, I'll make sure I put these to use tonight.
Thank you. Seeing no other board comment, and I already went to the public on this particular one. Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
The motion carries.
All right, moving forward with item D8, Pupil Progression Plan. Consideration of a Request for the Approval of the 2021-22 School Year District Pupil Progression Plan. Can I get a motion? Board Member Baloo, can I get a second? Board Member Lannis? Superintendent, do we have like a brief, because it's such an important item, do we have a brief presentation?
Yes, Madam Vice President, Ms. Andrea Okonski, our Chief of Assessment Accountability, will present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Collins, we have a few slides for you tonight, and I want to thank you guys for affording me the opportunity to represent the over 40 stakeholders who participated in this process this year and gave us input in the development of this year's plan. So real quick, what is a pupil progression plan? As you guys know, it is rooted in Louisiana law, part of the Louisiana Educational Program, which you know is the LEAP. It is grounded in Bulletin 1566, the state's policy for pupil progression. The state provides us with a template, that template is color-coded, which we'll get into in a second, it is pre-populated with state policy and state law, and then it provides an opportunity for a local response, where we can say how we will meet the requirements of state policy and local law under our discretion. And then each year, the Louisiana Department of Education puts out guidance, which we follow, and then follow the process and the development of our plan. Simply put, a pupil progression plan defines how students are placed and promoted within our school system. So what we did for you was we put together a quick cheat sheet for you of the table of contents of the required sections of the pupil progression plan. Real quick, the first two sections deal with placement. A lot of conversation went on this summer about kindergarten first grade placement. Remember, there's been a change in Louisiana law for kindergarten, that change does not go into effect until next school year, so you won't see any change at this moment in that section. The next two sections deal with the promotion of students in grades K-3 and 5-7 and grade 4. Notice the state pulls out the historical 4th and 8th grade and treats them as separate sections. You also have a section for high school promotion with your high school considerations that go with Carnegie credits, and then supports for students, where students who are on individual academic improvement plans, summer remediation, and during the school year remediation requirements based on LEAP performance. Rounding out the end of a plan is the promotion for certain student populations, your EL students, ESS students would fall under that chapter. The next section requires that districts outline and define our alternative programs and our adult education programs. We are also required to define and lay out due process procedures. And then lastly, we have an opportunity to provide any other local responses that pertain to the promotion and placement of students as they matriculate through our school system. So this is a process that is required each year. However, the state this year, because there were no major changes at the state level, gave districts the option to not reevaluate their plans and simply renew or resubmit last year's plan. We did not take that option. As staff, we felt that it was our obligation in the spirit of continuous improvement to convene our committee and to go through this required steps of the process. We involved the stakeholder groups that are required by Bulletin 1566, we actually started with our parents and our teachers, since there were no major policy shifts, we pulled them in, presented the previously board-approved plan to them, and said, hey, tell us what's confusing, tell us what areas are causing concern, so that we as staff can dig deeper into those areas, and that's what we did. So for those watching at home or those unfamiliar, where do you find the pupil progression plan? It's on our district policy page, that's a screenshot of where you can find it, and as a reminder, it's a color-coded document. The black font is that pre-populated state law, state policy, blue font is our local response. Items that you see in a text box are the prompts that we are required to respond to, and then anything you'll see in red on your draft that's posted as board backup is a proposed or recommended change. You'll see strike-throughs and then an explanation of that change in red. Again, blue is district language, black is state language, red would be something we're proposing to change this year. So as you look at your backup, we provided you with a track changes chart, and you'll notice from the screenshot that I have here, you have the full document in your backup, because I know it's hard to read here, it's minimal changes, like I said, there were no major changes at the state level. If you'd like, I can go over the major areas for you. Real quickly, in the first two chapters with placement, as you guys recall, you approved us to use a new form of dibbles, so we had to search the document, change that name and title. With regards to placement, Act 53 of the Louisiana Legislature in response to COVID said that student LEAP scores in the elementary grades could said that student LEAP scores in the elementary grades could not be used for promotion or placement. So we grabbed that language from Act 53 and put it anywhere that it impacted elementary promotion or the state placement test language. Moving on with the placement section, one other change that we made as a response to our stakeholders, our teachers and our guidance counselors, they asked us to plug in language from Bulletin 741 with regards to how you, or to properly place a student who returns to the district from homeschooling. Bulletin 741 details it and defines it. We just didn't have it in our pupil progression plan. We didn't stray from Bulletin 741. We just put it in here so that they wouldn't have to go seek it elsewhere and it would all be in one place for them. Moving on to the promotion sections, Act 833 was recently renamed the April Dunn Act. We did a search of the document, replacing the term Act 833 with April Dunn Act. Our ESS team spent time in some subcommittee meetings because the Louisiana Department of Education, with the renaming of that policy, put out a guidance document. And so we made sure and strengthened our alignment to that policy guidance document. So you'll see some new paragraphs and bullets put in here and some paragraphs that we strike through. We just simply copied and pasted from their policy guidance documents and strengthened that alignment to the April Dunn Act. And then last but not least, under the high school considerations section, you will see a slight change in valedictorian and salutatorian as it relates to the two high schools that host gifted sites. The last round of changes occur in the appendix. And in the appendix, we simply updated the Louisiana Department of Education guidance documents for the upcoming school year. There were no major substantive changes there. So what's next and what are the other requirements? State bulletin requires that we give public notice. We posted public notice to our website on September the first. Because of our committee structure and board meeting structure, we're actually exceeding that requirement because you guys will discuss this publicly, not once, but twice, tonight and again next week. We have until October one for you guys to vote on and approve a plan. And then we either have to submit that election form, that I told you we had the option to roll over, or our new plan with appropriate signatures from the board president and the superintendent. Once it's board-approved, once we get confirmation that it has been positively received by the department, they usually send me a return email confirming that it's received and we can move forward, then we will begin communications with our stakeholders, both internal and external. We'll post things to our website, we'll do recorded webinars, and then we'll push out into the various department and stakeholder group meetings to adequately explain the pupil progression plan to both internal staff and external community members and parents. So I'll be happy to take any questions or go a little bit deeper in any area that you'd like.
Thank you. Board Member Dyson has some questions.
Sure.
Ms. Okonski, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to ask, just so we can get some clarity, can you give us some information on the reentry of homeschoolers?
Yes.
Because I know that with this COVID situation, we've got some more homeschooling than typical. And I want to make sure we're all clear on what steps need to be taken while they're homeschooling to ensure that they would have the option with ease to come back.
Sure. And anybody who's listening can look on page eight of the draft.
Okay.
It's actually from Bulletin 741, section 707. And what it says is that when you reenter from a homeschool, whether it's state-approved or not, that the superintendent or his designee, and this situation will be the principal, shall determine the placement. And that placement shall be determined through the proper assessments. So what happens is the student comes in with the transcripts, with the academic record, and there are a series of assessments that go on to confirm the placement of the student. What kinds of assessments might we use? Well, if you're a grade five or seven, five or nine, excuse me, the state has a formal placement test that we use. There's an ELA in math. And that helps. It's graded, just like the LEAP, five achievement levels, and it determines that piece. If it's not at those areas, or if it's a high school student, then we have a battery of assessments in the accountability department. For high school students to determine the proficiency, we actually have to register those with the state to make sure that they are aligned to state standards. So we have a menu of offering of assessments and we work with the principal and the parent and we can administer them in the accountability office. Or I've even deployed my staff at times to go to the site and to work with the teachers to administer it, just to make sure it's done in an equitable, objective manner.
And for instance, say there's a student who doesn't meet the requirements, are they able to retest?
They can.
Or?
They can.
How does that work?
Yes. So like I said, we have an assortment. And what you want to do is you want to look at a preponderance of evidence. Now, for Carnegie credit, it's a little different. Because for Carnegie credit, like I said, at the high school level, it has to be something that the state defines as acceptable to meet proficiency. And Bulletin 741 lays that out. For a student who is prior to high school, then we can utilize a variety of our standard-based assessments that are on hand.
And is there a point in time that that needs to be done by to, or can this be done throughout the school year? Homeschooling isn't going so well?
Absolutely.
COVID has lifted and is not as worrisome, or whatever the circumstances may be, that can be done throughout the year and not at only set points?
Correct. While we would, of course, like for it to happen at natural intervals, natural break, beginning of the year, semester, whatnot. A review of placement can occur at any time during the school year. And if a student reenters, Bulletin 741 is very clear, the steps that we take to examine those academic documents to make that placement.
Okay. And do you feel like most of the homeschool curricula that you've seen, does it typically follow the points that need to be mastered or, you know?
Ms. Dyson, I appreciate your sentiment there. I am not the homeschool expert. But what I do will say is that it's my understanding that those, that the parents and the families that choose that register with the state and they go through a vetting process with the state. And so one of the pieces that you come back to us with are those state department documents, where that they, you have registered with them and you have worked with them to ensure that you're meeting those standards.
Good. Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Seeing no other board questions, any public comment? Seeing no public comment, back to the board. Seeing no other board comment, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward, item D ten, litigation. Consideration of a request for the approval of the recommendation from Mr. Gwen Shamblin, General Counsel, East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, in the following matter. Oh, what I did, oh! Thank you. Item D nine. I checked it off early on my little notes. My bad. So item D nine, policy. Consideration of a request for the approval of the following school board policy revisions and related matters. Item JD, discipline, policy, excuse me, policy JD, discipline, policy JCDAB, school alcohol and drug use, policy JC, DAC, dangerous weapons and firearms, policy JDD, out-of-school suspension, and policy, oh, policy JDDA, in-school suspension, and policy JDE, expulsion. Can I get a motion? All right. Board Member Lanis and Board Member Goode. And Board Member Ware Jackson with board comment.
I know Mr. Shamblin knows what I'm going to ask. Just an overview of these policies, please.
Yes, ma'am. I was waiting on you, Ms. Ware Jackson. So this is a revision of five policies, all related either directly to discipline or the implementation of discipline. And that's discipline, out-of-school and in-school suspensions, expulsions, dangerous weapons, and student drug and alcohol use. As a board member, back in July, we adopted a student handbook that required some heavy revision with regard to discipline and discipline procedure. Last legislative session, Acts 473, heavily revised, revised Statute 17416, which deals primarily with school boards and discipline, to require, as a general rule, that we now use positive behavior supports and positive behavior interventions as part of our discipline process. And so the student handbook heavily reflected those revisions. What these five revisions of policy does is align our CAPS policy with our student handbook requirements and with the law. And so these are all legislatively based. We don't have a lot of wiggle room with what we can do with the policies. All of these revisions basically align us so that we are legal in terms of our policy and our practices. If you notice on the memo, Deputy Chief of Policy, Vicky Silas, was part of helping to put this together. She's also putting together training for administrators on these changes to make sure that implementation is appropriate and fully done well. So she couldn't be here tonight, but I know she want me to say that in her absence. So I'll take any further questions on the revisions of policy. It's pretty straightforward. The policies I've included have the red highlights, so you can see the changes from old policy to new policy. All revisions, nothing new, but heavily revised. And I'll take any questions.
That's it? I mean, you have any? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Shamblin.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Council Shamblin, I appreciate that Ms. Vicky Silas, is the name?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate that she is going to do training specifically on changes to the policy. My question is, have we set, as we've kind of mentioned before, and then we've discussed it one-on-one, have we put a timetable in place to align, yes, these necessary legal and policy changes with our mission to implement, our mission and our actions to implement a more restorative practices model of discipline? Because it's one thing to make policy changes, but essentially what we did when we said and we voted on things to implement restorative practices is that we are pushing, and when the legislature said, look, we need to make these changes because it's too punitive and detrimental to the academic success of students, is it, we are asking for a paradigm shift. And when you get to doing and trying to create a paradigm shift, it needs more than just policy changes. It needs, people need tools. You know, because even if they have the vision, do they know, tools and guidance, because even if they get the vision, you know, some of them not going to get the vision because it's been done a certain way for so long and they just think that that's how they have to handle certain students.
You are exactly correct. So now that the policy implementation is clear about what needs to be done, a part of the work that the team is doing, which we're going to be working with Castle, is to implement procedures and protocols. You're going to hear soon about a term that we will introduce to the board called multi-tiered systems of support, where we are talking about practices that actually happen in schools that are going to be aligned to these actual policies and implementation. And so in those practices are all of the things such as PBIS, restorative circles, there's all those things. And those trainings will happen, where you'll see that consistently across the system.
Okay. I greatly appreciate that because again, you know, people are just used to doing things a certain way. And the zero tolerance discipline mindset has been in place for a couple of decades. And so it's a heavy lift even for those that believe in the change. So I appreciate that you all have put some things in place. Thank you very much. Our public comment on item D nine. Seeing no public comment, back to the board. Seeing no further board comment, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Now, moving forward with item D ten, litigation. Consideration of a request for the approval of the recommendation from Mr. Gwen Shamblin, General Counsel of East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, in the following matters. A, Nicholas Perron versus Berkeley Insurance Company et al., suit number 660465, section 27, 19th JDC, Parish of East Baton Rouge, State of Louisiana. And B, Frances Stedge versus East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Jessica Smart, suit number 667205, section, division 22, 19th JDC, Parish of East Baton Rouge. Can I get a motion? Ms. Bernard and Board Member Goode? Seeing no... Okay. Board President Tatman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Just a note, I know sometimes it'll show up, it's probably a spell check, but it says sweet. Yeah, just, that's fine. Thank you.
Seeing no other board comment. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, back to the board. Seeing no board comment, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. Motion carries.
All right. Moving forward to item E one, announcement of meetings, September ninth. Regular meeting to be held on September 16th at 5:00 PM at the Professional Development Center. School board retreat to be held on September 24th at 9:00 AM at the Professional Development Center. Committee of the hold to be held on October 7th at 5:00 PM at the Professional Development Center. Moving forward with item F, adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn? All right. Board Member Goode, right on time. Meeting is adjourned.